Okay, I'm gonna call this regular council meeting to order. Mr. Daniels.
Please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, August 15th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Mr. Jones, can you give us a report out of the closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, happy to do that. The report out of closed session regarding the real property negotiations for 7501 Sunrise Boulevard is the council provided direction to the city manager relative to negotiating a non-binding letter of intent with the Life Foundation, and that any formal action will be discussed and acted upon in open session at a future city council meeting. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next item.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Let's start with you, Ms. Bruins.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to just report out about National Night Out, which was last Tuesday, what a great evening it was again this year. Started with Chayson, which is my home neighborhood association. And I think I'm probably accurate, they had over 300 people visiting that that night. And I want to thank all of the various groups for the efforts that they put out to make it a great event, to meet new neighbors, and to make it a nice event for all of us. Did not have a sanitation board meeting since our last council meeting, but we did have a PAL board meeting, and I just want to share a couple of things from that. If I can get my ear turned on my phone, okay. So we met yesterday, and we are in the process of hiring a new part-time employee who's going through background right now to be the PAL coordinator. And so hopefully have an announcement on that by the next council meeting. And that's basically a part-time staff person who will be the glue that keeps it all together. We had an event in July, we had a day at Rush Park swimming for the kids, and that was a lot of fun for them, we do that every summer. And then our next event is going to be August 20th at Lake Natomas, a Saturday. It's a day at the lake, so if you know any kids that would love to have a day away, or parents that'd love to have their kids have a half a day away, that'll be a day of water safety, water sports, kayaking, and interacting with our police department and making new friends. So you can go on PAL's website and sign up for that. In addition to that, in September, on Sunday Fun Day, during Sunday Fun Day, PAL is going to be having a fundraiser where for a $20 donation, you can get preferred parking in Parking Lot A, I believe it is. Is that right, Dave? A? Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell. Yeah, I think that's what it is, one on Antelope. So give you priority parking and also support PAL in the process of it. Also, we were very fortunate to receive a $2,000 donation from Enterprise Rent-A-Car, who has been an annual supporter of PAL, and we're very thankful for that. We heard a presentation from an organization called Golf Guys, which is a business that helps organize and plan and execute golf tournaments, taking the workload off of the nonprofit. So something that we are considering for the future. And we talked a little bit about Miracle on Fountain Square and PAL's participation in that this year during our Christmas tree lighting. And also came up with the idea that it'd really be healthy for these kids that we give to through this organization to have a PAL Give Back Day and teach these children at a young age what community service is all about. So that will be discussed further. And also considering applying for a grant that would help fund sending kids to camp for a week. So it was a very full board meeting, and we got a lot accomplished. And I'll report out more as it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels.
Not too much, no reports from regional boards. Join Jeannie and saying National Night Out was a great success. It was very enjoyable, a little hot, but very enjoyable. It was nice to see how many people actually came out and participated. And if that's something you haven't done in the past, next year, same time, first week in August, basically, I encourage you to get out and join your neighbors because it was a very good time and a great opportunity to say hello to each other. So do that. And then the only other thing is, excuse me, is that today it happened, it finally happened. Thank God, my daughter started kindergarten. So schools in session, don't forget, and take a little time around those areas because the little ones, they don't get it yet. And I want to thank the chief and the PD for their presence. As I was walking my little one up, a police car strolled by slowly. So I really appreciate seeing that, and I'm sure they got out to the other schools, too. That's a great thing. And then the other, going back to National Night Out, I had the opportunity to ride with Sergeant Semino. And if you've never had that opportunity, you definitely want to take that opportunity and just go ride around in a car with him and be entertained. So thank you very much for that. That's it.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Monday night, attended the Regional Transit Board Meeting. Major item there was an update on the downtown Riverfront Streetcar. And that is going to run from the Sacramento Valley Station, where Amtrak comes in, over to West Sacramento, across the I Street Bridge to the River Cats Ballpark there. And we delegated authority to our general manager to enter into a funding agreement with West Sacramento. They're going to be paying for this, and RT is going to be administering it. So that's the update from Regional Transit. Today, had a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. And a couple of highlights, we approved the SB 1 Local Partnership Program, both the formula distribution method and also the competitive ranking process. And Regina, are you out in the audience? You're probably on it already. By formula, Citrus Heights gets $257,000, and we can apply for up to $25 million. So go for it. Public works. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any board updates, but I did, like the rest of my council members, did attend National Night Out. It was a great evening. Did attend my own group in Area 5, which is great to see a lot of the folks there. But I was really impressed with Chayson's effort and all the work they put into. So I just wanted to applaud that particular neighborhood association for doing a really, really great job. And the next thing I'm really looking forward to is Sunday Fun Day on September 25th. So that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. And I can't believe you guys didn't mention this, we went to the Chamber's Elected Officials Reception. It was great, it was a lot of fun. We got to see and hear updates from all of our regional elected members who represent the Citrus Heights area, and it was really good. The Chamber did a very good job putting that on, so I just want to say thank you again for them for putting that event on, as always, a really great job. And next item.
And Mayor, I apologize, I skipped over approval of agenda, so we'll take this opportunity to do that item now.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Miller, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
So we're okay now.
All right.
Thank you.
We're official.
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And I know we do have a couple of general public comment cards, and then a number for item number 13. And I apologize to the council members of the public, we are having a challenge with some of our technology tonight, so we're trying to resolve that.
Great, do we have any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands.
Great, so we'll go straight for the folks that are here. Janet Newton, could you come up? Yes, could you come up to the microphone?
Yes, I'd like to address the Citrus Heights Republic contract. And I got a bill, and I was shocked. So I did some investigating. Because I've paid 3% of $45, which is my max until now, and that was too low. Then I took it to $50, and that was still too low. So correct me if I'm wrong. Citrus Heights negotiated a contract with Republic on the behalf of the students of this city. And first, you entered into a franchise agreement with Republic, meaning none of us can have another garbage company collect our garbage within this city. Secondly, within that agreement, you increased our base price. Or should I say price baseline? Fourth, your percentage is 3% annually for life. Fifth, you counted the protest letters unopened in a city council meeting. How do you know, how do we know? You counted all the letters, there was no ballot box. But as you said, we won. In my mind, you've become famous for taxes/fees being annually for life, referring to the tax measure you put on the ballot in November of 2020. Yes, Governor Brown signed SB 1383 into law in September 2016. Did you comply with the 50% reduction of organic waste disposal in landfills by 2020? How? Nothing changed, but instead you waited until the last minute, and now it's on our backs, over five years after the fact. Sacramento County Utilities gives tours of their water quality control plant to show how and why our rates go up. Will you represent our city in going to Republic Services and recommend that they do the same? They can certainly show us what goes where and how they handle the various cans. Nothing I've received is really self-explanatory. By the way I see it, we're paying more and doing all the work because you've certainly not made any of it easy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Christina, Veronica, and Andrea.
Good evening. My name is Christina DeSalle. For those of you who don't know me, Veronica Hunter and Andrea Montano. We're here today to talk to you guys about a tiny home community. The three of us have grown up here in Citrus Heights, we're very passionate. We have a lot of loyalty here to this community, and we just want to see it keep growing. After these ladies are gonna talk a little bit more about it here in just a moment, but after they're done speaking, because we only have three minutes each, we'd love for you guys to come and join us, maybe possibly for lunch, coffee, whatever we can do to elaborate a little bit more. Because obviously, three minutes, we're not going to get very much out right now. So yeah, hopefully, we can reach out to you guys, and you guys can come chat with us after we're done. I'm gonna let these ladies take it from here.
Hi, I'm Veronica. I have dedicated my career to helping people with housing needs. And in California, we don't have just a homeless crisis anymore, we have an affordable housing crisis. In fact, almost half of Citrus Heights households are made up of single-income earners who may qualify for a home loan but are unable to find a home they can afford in the community. Check out the list of, oh, we gave you guys a flyer. So on that is a list of counties and communities in the state of California that are allowing movable tiny homes as ADUs to help bring immediate and affordable housing solutions to their communities.
Thank you, Veronica, and good evening, council. My name's Andrea, and I'm a Sooniby tiny dweller and a member of the Tiny Home Industry Association that focuses on advocacy for legal tiny homes. Not to be confused with recreational vehicles or manufactured homes. We work with cities all around the United States to try to, oh, this is, try to share information of how we can help city managers become, to help with initiatives with affordable housing, and doing it in a way that benefits the community. So this, not this weekend, but the following weekend, there is the Tri-County Home and Garden Show in Roseville, and there'll be a tiny expo at that event. There was a flyer that was sent out, and on Friday, we're having a special meeting for all of our elected officials to come out and learn more about how we can help the city guide into amending the ordinances and aiding into making movable tiny homes a successful solution. So we would love for you guys to come join us at the fair. And I will be there Friday and Saturday, so I hope to see you guys there. Thank you for your time, and we would love to share more information with you in the future and possibly add an agenda item so we can give a more formal presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, update on the Sunday Fundy event to be held on September 25th, 2022.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Michelle Sario, and this is Chris Myers. We are with the General Services Department. And can you believe it, I'm presenting Sunday Fun Day. It's been a few years. Thank you. 2019 was our last Sunday Fun Day, so we want to make this one bigger and better because it's also the celebration of our 25th anniversary of cityhood. So it is Sunday, September 25th, from 11:00 to 4:00, and it is at Rush Park. Some of the events details for this year, as you can see, it's back, which is great, located at Rush Park, 7801 Auburn Boulevard. This is a partnered event with Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, and of course, the city. This includes this year our celebration of 25 years. And all activities and attractions are free, with the exception of food, drinks, and retail booths. And just like Jeannie was mentioning, there will be a police activity, a PAL fundraiser, premier parking lot, which will be off Antelope, and it's actually Lot E. And further information will come out on that as we get closer to the event. There is a shuttle service that we are also going to be providing this year by the Sacramento Regional Transit, and that will be located here at City Hall for pickup and drop-off to Rush Park. And we will have two shuttles running simultaneously. There will also be bike valet provided by Sacramento-area bike advocates. For anyone that wants to bring their bike, they will actually do a valet check-in of your bicycle for you. Some of the other highlights, we've got the food trucks, inflatables, children's activities, exhibit booths, live music, the ever-popular Police Canine Demonstrations. And we are doing a tree planting dedication inside Rush Park this year for the 25th anniversary as well.
Community engagement-wise, we have Connect Citrus Heights. We will have the beautification truck, the Block Party Trailer. The Citrus Heights Historical Society will be doing guided tours of the Rush home with related activities, outdoor displays, antique cars, a 1914 school bus. We will have a 50th anniversary pictorial of Sunrise Mall, and we will wrap that in with Sunrise, excuse me, with Sunrise Tomorrow display at the end of it. Reach the neighborhood associations as well. And if you have or haven't, there is the graphics for the Block Party Trailer.
Surprise. Okay, so something as promised, to be bigger and better this year. We are, along with the celebration, we are having live music, which is going to be a pretty big deal for the Sunday Fun Day. We are, of course, we're having the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, will be there. We have the ever-popular country duo Thompson Square. And then we also have Rock from Austin Mo, and he's actually a local artist. Not Citrus Heights local, but local to the Northern California Sacramento area. As of now, with our vendor breakdown, we actually have 10 sponsors. We just gained another one yesterday. We've got 32 exhibitors, so we are still looking for vendors. So if you are interested in becoming a vendor, please register. You can do that online on our Sunday Fun Day page. We have 11 food trucks, and new again this year is a beer garden, so.
Event sponsors include Aerocom mechanical, Assemblyman Ken Cooley, California American Water, Dr. Jana for City Council, Patelco Credit Union, San Juan School District, SMUD, Stones Gambling Hall, Sunrise Marketplace, and Republic Services.
So in closing, please join us, that's Sunday, September 25th, from 11:00 to 4:00 at Rush Park. Does have any questions?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
I just have a comment. Thompson Square.
Yeah.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
I'm really even more excited about this. And in 2019, I actually took the shuttle from here at City Hall, and it was actually a really cool experience. There were quite a few other people on the bus, and it was so much easier than parking over there. Just park right here and catch the shuttle over. It was really, really convenient, so I'm even more excited than I was before.
I should? Yes.
So I didn't say anything specific about our celebration of our city's 25-year anniversary. I understand it's going to be part of it.
So council will be planting a tree together. There will be a monument planted along, well, the monument will be placed there eventually, commemorating the event. We're looking at some sort of a granite piece of rock with an inscription placed in that with the council members' names, commemorating the 25th anniversary and the planting of the tree at Rush Park. And that will be done sometime early on prior to the music and the arrest of the events of the day. So that'll be the beginning part of the program, potentially.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brett.
You know, it's amazing that it's our 25th year, it's the mall's 50th year and all that kind of stuff. And I'm wondering, do we do a time capsule? I'm wondering, did they do a time capsule 25 years ago? I don't know if some folks maybe that have been around longer might remember something like that, but those things are kind of common. So I don't know if that's something that you guys want to think about as we plant this tree and create this monument, maybe a time capsule, I don't know. But for those of you folks out there, if you have long-term memories that maybe you know that something happened back in the day, let us know.
We got a time capsule right over there.
So it's over there?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember we did something, but yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Let's dig it up.
That's not a bad idea.
Any other comments? Looking forward to it. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, we have consent calendar items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Do I have a motion? Oh, which one?
Like to pull item.
Like to pull item eight, please.
I move approval of consent calendar minus item eight.
Can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
Move approval of the consent calendar minus item eight.
Second.
All right, motion by Daniel, second by Miller, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next item.
So item eight, the subject is participation in Regional Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Building Electrification Efforts.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Eric Singer with the Planning Department will be presenting on this briefly. So on May 18th, 2022, the city manager's office received a memo, from the Sacramento Environmental Commission requesting city participation in a no-cost memorandum of understanding, or MOU. It was recently adopted by the city and county of Sacramento and the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, or SMUD. Apologies. So simply put, the proposed building electrification MOU would set the framework for how participating agencies in the region would work together towards building electrification. The intention is to lead to increased information sharing between regional agencies, avoiding duplicative work between said agencies, providing opportunities for shared learning, and increased opportunity for public input, ultimately hoping to ensure an equitable and just transition into the electrification of existing infrastructure and buildings as well as any new construction. Ultimately, it's also intended to demonstrate to any state or federal funding partners that there's an existing collaborative framework going on between the regional participating agencies, and hopefully make them more competitive for funding opportunities. Most importantly, participation in the MOU does not bind the city of Citrus Heights into any ordinance or regulation that would tie our city to any other jurisdictions actions. Lastly, it would meet policies that are outlined within the general plan, including encouraging green building practices, cooperating with regional agencies, and specifically looking at programs with SMUD for further energy conservation efforts. So this is staff's recommended motion, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. So the city of Sacramento already has an electrification program in place, correct? And what does that mean?
Well, essentially electrification is trying to ensure that as much new development as possible is not relying on natural gas for things like stove top ranges, gas dryers, things of that nature. Promoting electric use as a greener way forward in both new construction and any potential for electrification of existing infrastructure that's in place. So by the city of Citrus Heights participating in the MOU, we would not necessarily be committing to the same type of program that the city of Sacramento has in place. That would have to be done as an ordinance passed by the council. Simply put, this is more of a commitment by the city to share resources, information, participate in either monthly or quarterly meetings by a representative of staff, most likely myself, with other regional agencies that are doing these efforts. Mainly, if we can show to, like I said, the state or federal government that we have a regional collaboration going on with other agencies in these regards, it could make us more competitive for specific types of grant funding, whether they be green building-related or not.
Thanks, Eric, appreciate that.
Sure thing.
So that's all the questions I had.
I just wanted to say something about this. Because I found it interesting, you brought it up, I finally heard it. It's really about the elimination of natural gas, it's not about electrification. We're already electrified, so it's eliminating natural gas for heating, cooking, that kind of thing. And I understand it from a greenhouse gas standpoint. But the fact that this doesn't mention it once in the staff report and the MOU, I find it kind of devious and dishonest. That's what we're talking about, is eliminating natural gas. We're not talking about electrification. And I'm a little suspect on at least the costs involved and such, especially when we're having peak rates for electrical and we're trying to push more onto electrical, including charging our cars. And I just don't know where, if our infrastructure can handle this. I don't, anyway, that's my two cents, and it's not directed at you, of course. It's just, I found it extremely dishonest that the MOU that they sent us has nothing about elimination of natural gas, and that's really the primary purpose of this. So I've said my two cents.
Okay, Mr. Daniels.
I think that was three cents.
Okay.
Did you say at the beginning of your presentation, it was the Sacramento Environmental Association?
The, I believe it was the Sacramento Environmental Commission that sent out the memo.
And then in this, it says that we would be considered an additional agency, right?
Correct.
Which is pretty good buy-in language. And I share these concerns also, that... And I share these concerns also that it has this appearance at least of one more step of incrementalism towards something that maybe we don't all agree on. And and so I don't have enough information to support it or to feel comfortable in supporting it. And so tonight, I'm sure I am going to vote no on it at this point. But I appreciate Councilmember Miller's comments because I think they ring true. And that's it.
Mayor, any more comments?
Okay.
I could just. This is a general comment. I see this as a as an opportunity for for the powers that be, and once everybody signed on to this, if all the cities were to sign on to this, they could flag it around the state Capitol and say, okay, now we can mandate more things to the cities. And that's my biggest problem with this this type of agreement. I realize it doesn't cost us anything, at least right now. But I certainly have huge concerns over signing up for this.
Other question? Yes, go ahead.
So if we if we did not participate in this MOU, what would that mean to the city?
There wouldn't be no change essentially in our current practices.
Okay.
Okay, and I just kind of want to remind council. Last year, we had a presentation from SMUD, but they're trying to go to, you know, zero carbon neutral by 2030. And they're doing that by increasing their rates and forcing us, you know, to to make these kind of modifications. So it's not that this is this is just another step in that process, right? We've seen this before, and we know what's coming down the pipeline. What's the pleasure of council?
So we have we have a motion? So I'll submit a motion. I move that we do not participate in this.
I second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Vice Mayor Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number 11. The subject is zoning code updates. The recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15061B3 of the guidelines and to introduce for first reading and waive the full reading of the ordinance and ordinance amending section 106.32 Affordable Housing Incentives of chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Zoning Code Section.
Thank you, Amy. So this item, staff is proposing to modify section 10632 of the zoning code regarding affordable housing incentives. This is to reflect changes in and to remain compliant with current state law. These include changes like limits on impact fees, longer affordability periods, and changes to the allowed incentives and concessions that can be provided to a developer. Just a quick, quick recap on what exactly the density bonus law is intended to do. So if a developer is promising that 10% of their units would be affordable to very low or low income families, that development could receive a 20% density bonus. Simply put, developer proposes 100 units, 10 of which that would be affordable. They would be allowed to build 120 units. Recent examples of this policy being put into practice include the Fair Oaks Senior Apartment Complex that was allowed to build 108 units, where otherwise they would have only been allowed to build 100. Additionally, concessions can be allowed for things like reduced parking, reduced parking setbacks. Those were some examples that were provided for the Fair Oaks project. Importantly, new state legislation is likely going to increase the number of projects that come forth that ask for density bonuses. So it's very important that our zoning code stays compliant with the current state law. Just looking specifically at a couple of changes that might be of interest to the group. Jurisdiction, for example, cannot waive a request for a concession anymore based on a potential adverse impact on the physical environment. A specific parking concession that could be awarded is including reduced parking requirements for developments that offer 40% moderate income units within a half mile of a quality transit stop. So simply put, just bringing the zoning code into compliance with current state law. Nothing within our zoning code would be changing that would be in conflict with what the state is already mandating. And these are staff's recommended motions.
This is. This is a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Any public comment on item 11? Seeing none, close the hearing.
And I did not see any raised hands over Zoom either.
Thank you for that. Is there any comments from council?
Well, I will move that we approve the determination that the proposed amendments are exempt from SEQA. Do we need to do these separately, council? That's my motion.
Motion by Bruins?
Second.
Second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I also move to introduce for the first reading and read by title only and waive all the full reading of this ordinance as shown in attachment one as an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights amending section 106.32 of the Affordable Housing Incentives of chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, also known as the Zoning Code Section.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number 12. The subject is abandonment of setback in Larchmont Rosewood subdivision. The recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15061B3 of the guidelines and to introduce for first reading and waive the full reading of the ordinance and ordinance approving abandonment of an existing 25 foot setback on 30 parcels located within the Larchmont Rosewood subdivision.
Thank you. So the city was approached by a property owner within the Larchmont Rosewood subdivision about an existing setback that's recorded on the subdivision map. It's basically impacting the feasibility of additional construction on their property as well as neighboring properties. So the setback in question actually crosses 30 separate parcels. It was originally recorded in 1983. There's no real clear record of what exactly the setback was recorded for. But what we've been able to deduce is that it was likely a safety setback. At the time the map was recorded, the adjacent parcel to the west was owned by Southern Pacific Railroad. And the adjacent parcel was subsequently sold and then developed into more single family residential development. So it's kind of negated the need for what we assume was a safety setback. Abandonment of the setback in question would allow for property owners to expand their homes, add additional structures. It would likely retroactively legalize a lot of structures that have been built in the neighborhood. If you go through there, you'll probably see quite a few that have been built within that setback area. This is the approximate extent of the setback in question. So as you can see, it borders our border with unincorporated Sacramento County. It's affecting 30 parcels in total, as I mentioned. All 30 of the properties in question were notified of tonight's meeting as well as all properties within 500 feet of the affected parcels. Almost 500 mailings were sent out and no public official public comments were received. So in order to abandon the setback in question, we have to make sure that we're compliant with the Subdivision Map Act. According to the Map Act, amending an existing recorded map is allowed as long as the following criteria are met. One, the modifications don't impose any additional burden on the existing fee owner. Two, the modifications don't alter any right, title, or interest in the property shown on the recorded map. And three, modified map does not contain any grounds for denying a map under the Subdivision Map Act essentially. So the instrument by which the setback would be abandoned was provided as exhibit B on attachment one. A separate certificate of correction is going to be required to be recorded for each of the 30 parcels in question. And the applicant's engineer has actually agreed to file all 30 certificates with the county recorder's office. So we'll save our office some trouble. These are staff's recommended motions. And again, I'm able to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Who actually owns the setback land? Do the property owners already own it, but they're restricted from using it?
That is correct. So a setback is not like an easement. An easement, there might be an ownership interest from, you know, a group or a public utility company. In this case, it's no different than your front yard setback, your sidebar side yard setback, essentially just limiting the potential for construction on the property.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing, so I'll open said hearing. Any takers? Any comments? No? Okay, cool. I'll close it.
And I don't I don't see any on Zoom either.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I'd move we determine the proposed amendments of this item are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it also moved to introduce the first reading, read by title only, and waive the full reading of this ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights approving abandonment of an existing 25 foot setback on 30 parcels located within the Larchmont Rosewood subdivision.
I'll second that as well.
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Now, what you all have been here waiting for. Next item.
Next item is regular calendar, item number 13. The subject is Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, formerly known as the Electric Greenway Trail Project. And there are a couple of resolutions for council consideration. The first is a resolution approving the use of park facilities impact fees in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. A resolution approving a loan from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments to provide gap funding for construction of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Central Valley and Engineering for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Coastland Civil Engineering Services to provide construction management, inspection, and materials testing services for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number seven to the contract for professional services with the GHD for construction support for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. And a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Sacramento Tree Foundation to provide professional services for tree planting, monitoring, and outreach services.
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this item. I have a conflict of interest because I live within 500 feet of the project. And so by law, I am not to participate, so I will be leaving the dais.
Thank you, Ms. Bruins. No, you stay Stevie. We're here. We're doing this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Casey Kemp and our community development director alongside Leslie Blumquist, our city engineer. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about this project. It's been a long time in the works and kind of go over a little bit of the history and partnerships involved and the long process that took to get here. This project has been a partnership between the city, obviously, and the stakeholders on this screen. So I really want to recognize the importance of those partnerships with these various agencies. Without them, this project would not have come to fruition. Excellent. So tonight, I'm going to give you an overview. A lot of this is probably refresher, but just kind of remind the council where we came from, some of the history. Leslie will go over the current project status and a little bit more background. And then we'll entertain some motions. I think Amy's going to fix the Zoom. So just to help orient the council, on the bottom left side of the screen is Arcade Creek Park Preserve, which was really our first trail in the city when we were in our infancy of trail building. And that was a great success, and this really builds on that. So the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail will start at Arcade Creek Park Preserve and travel north on Sunrise Boulevard utilizing the existing traffic signal at Sayonara to cross the street in a safe manner. Then it will then travel south and then enter near the Mitchell Farms, just north of Pet Smart, enter the Mitchell Farms subdivision, connecting to that about quarter mile to a half mile trail. And then it will extend into Tempo Park. It will then cross Fair Oaks Boulevard at a new traffic signal that'll be pedestrian activated signal. So it'll be green unless a pedestrian pushes the button. And then it will enter Sundance Park outside the city in unincorporated Orangeville. From Sundance Park, it will go on street on existing roadways there for a brief period of time. And then if you're familiar with the 7-Eleven on Woodmore Oaks, it'll re again enter an open space and continue to the northeast entering String Park. It'll cross String Avenue, enter the city again, and it'll go through Northwoods Park. It'll cross the street at Sebar Sea Park, enter Sebar Sea Park, have a spur to Woodside Elementary, and then the main trail will continue northeast, ultimately terminating at Wachtel Way. Wanted to give some regional context too about how important this trail is as it fits into the regional vision for trails. Like I said, we are in our infancy of trails here in the city, but there's a lot of folks around us that have been working on this for a very long time. As you can see on the map, the orange dotted line is the trail alignment. It connects to creek trails that are proposed through the city further to the west. But notably, it gets us pretty close to the Roseville border. Roseville has 30 to 50 miles worth of trails that this would put us closer to connecting to. And ultimately, there's a regional vision to connect over to Folsom Lake and American River Parkway. So we're taking the first steps to get to that. There's also a long history. If you look, go back and look at our subdivision maps from the 60s and 70s along our creek corridors and the SMUD utility corridors, the county did a really good job of preserving land for this purpose to build trails and parks. So along the creeks, you know, those weren't developable for homes, but they did make great parks. So those pieces of land were dedicated to the county at the time and now are benefit the city. Same thing where there wasn't a park, there was an easement created to connect parks. And so this project connects eight different parks as a result. So then so then in 2000, we adopted our first general plan, and that's really what memorialized us as a city moving this forward. It had a goal 38 that said that we should connect create a series of creekside trails for public use. And so that was kind of the infancy for us. And then in 2011, the the general plan was updated again and included a complete streets policy and it directed an update of the bike master plan and the pedestrian master plan. So those were each their own individual process with an extensive amount of outreach. But before we got to the bike master plan, pedestrian master plan, we had a lot of questions about where trails were feasible. You know, is engineering wise feasible? Do we own the land? We had to do a lot of homework to figure that out. So we did a really, really big outreach effort and engineering effort to to understand where trails are feasible. And the council at that time directed us to proceed with the priority one trails, which are the highest priority, easiest trails to move forward with. And they direct us to incorporate those into our plans and pursue funding. So then in 2015, we did the bike master plan and updated the general plan map to include trails, memorializing where the trails would go, including this section of trails. Same thing with the pedestrian master plan. The trail this trail was identified as a high priority trail for the city to pursue.
So building upon the efforts to incorporate all of this in the various plans, in 2016, we applied for an active transportation program grant. This is a grant managed by Caltrans and provides funding only for projects that increase biking, walking, and alternative modes of transportation. At the time of this this cycle of the ATP program, they had over 450 applications requesting nearly a billion dollars. They awarded about 350 million, and our project was part of that. At that time of the grant award, the project scope was agreed upon, and we started moving forward. The grant award was about $6.2 million to construct a 2.9 mile long multi-use trail, a 10 foot wide paved section with two foot wide decomposed granite shoulders on either side, connects to the eight parks, ultimately connecting to the Sunrise Marketplace and a direct connection to Woodside K through 8. This is a partnership with San Juan Unified School District, who has dedicated land for the city to install the trail at Woodside K through 8. Partnership with Sunrise Recreation and Park District and Orangevale Recreation and Park District, for which it's their parks that this is running through. So we've been working very closely with them throughout the design of this project. Sacramento County, we cross a couple county streets, and so we've been working with them on the design of those crossings. And SMUD, a lot of the proposed trail alignment runs underneath SMUD electrical facilities. We've been working closely with them on their design requirements for various elements of the project. This is just a visual of what the trail is anticipated to look like. This is an existing trail in the city of Folsom. 10 foot wide asphalt with two foot wide decomposed granite shoulders. This is pretty standard and typical for multi-use trail designs, not only in Sacramento region, but throughout the state and the country. So just a quick trail development timeline here. So in 2016, we did identify that original ATP grant funds. We did the preliminary outreach and design, and City Council adopted the environmental document in October of 2019 for this project. We were continuing working on design, and at the end of 2020, there was a trail naming campaign. Members of the public submitted names, and that's when it was formally named the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail. And we've been working on the engineering and final design since that time. And I'll circle back to this slide in a few as well.
So as Leslie stated, we did a lot of outreach for this project, and we heard a lot of comments and concerns, and we really worked hard to address that. One of the biggest concerns we heard was related tree removal. And that's. And that's understandable because when we first did an environmental document, we had a very broad brush. We didn't have a lot of, all the details figured out, and we had assumed the worst-case scenario. So as we have continued with the engineering design, we've been able to refine that dramatically. So our thought process through that was number one, to avoid impacts. And so you could do that by meandering the trail, using walls or curbs, different engineering techniques to avoid those. If you can avoid them, there's also techniques to minimize the impact. So you can encroach a little bit into those drip lines if an arborist is supervising that work, or you can also do a different design techniques. And worst-case scenario, if you can't avoid an impact, you can mitigate for that, and that's involving planting trees. So at the end of the project, an arborist will evaluate all the trees removed and impacted, and then there'll be a number of trees that were required to replace consistent with the city's code. And then you also have to monitor them. So you have to monitor them and establish them, which is a three-year establishment period. So again, this illustrates what we assumed. On the left, the environmental document assumed the worst-case scenario, just a straight line, and identified 302 trees that were required to come out. Through the final design, we were able to reduce that by 81%. There's 57 trees that are required to be removed. So we really sharpened our pencils and were really able to reduce that. So again, the slide's a little duplicative, but we were able to use these various techniques to meander around trees as much as we possibly could. And then during construction, the contractor is obligated to install tree protection fencing, and if any work occurs within that tree protection fencing, an arborist is on-site to observe that work to ensure that it's following best practices. And then mitigation, we know mitigation's important. We know it's also, there's a bit of a challenge because we're under the smud line, so we are limited. So we collaborated really closely with smud and the Tree Foundation to develop a planning plan where we can get big trees outside the smud lines. We did. And where we couldn't, we have smaller trees that are approved by smud. One of the really important reasons why we went with the Tree Foundation is because we saw the value of doing an educational event as part of this. And those of you that know, the Tree Foundation is really good at getting the word out, getting volunteers, and really sharing the importance of trees for the community. And they'll also maintain it for three years at a reasonable price.
So we also looked at ways to make sure the trail was going to be safe for all users after construction. And working in collaboration with the Citrus Heights Police Department and the Sacramento County Sheriff's, we implemented Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Concepts, or SEPTED as they're referred to. And we did this by increasing site distance. The trail project construction will remove all overgrown vegetation. It will limb trees, make sure, in accordance with the arborists, make sure the line of sites are improved. So where you might be seeing vegetation and items happening, that will all be open and visible to trail users. There's a lot of dead ends currently along the trail alignment where fencing currently blocks. That will be opened up, and the vegetation at the end of those will be removed as well. Anywhere where we're putting in the 10-foot trail, we will be putting in trail lighting as well, so it will be lit at night, all solar light, so hoping to minimize our electrical costs and reduce our maintenance as well by still providing those safety elements. And just by paving the trail, we'll increase access for emergency vehicles, reducing response times. Opening up the dead ends will also help with that too, as they'll be able to quickly get in and around and through areas. We are required to install some new bridges. We do know there are concerns there. We've really worked hard to maintain and open up the areas, increase line of sight. And as well, we'll be installing riprap underneath, which are large jagged rocks that'll really help protect the embankment for environmental purposes, but will also make it really unattractive for anyone to want to be there. And we also heard throughout the public engagement phase of the project that people were concerned that they'd have to know which jurisdiction they were in and who to call should there be anything to report. So we've taken that into consideration. The project will install mile markers along the trail, so you'll be able to identify where you are. And we will have a consolidated response approach, which we've all already discussed and agree on how that will work. So back to our current status. Now that the engineering is done, we are here tonight for council authorization for construction of the trail project. The final plans were released on April 29, and bids were open on June 9. The engineer's estimate was 6.7. The low bid was 8.466 million. Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt is the low bidder. Including contingency, construction management, design support, and all other kind of soft costs, we're looking at a $10.374 million estimated construction cost for this project. So as you can imagine, we opened up the bids and we saw the numbers, and we were a little shocked and saddened. So immediately, we started looking at reasons why the numbers had come in higher than we were anticipating. Several of these reasons are listed here. We did take inflation into account when we were doing the engineer's estimate, but the amount that we were estimating was far higher than what we had ever thought would occur, especially over the last six months. And so that had a big and significant impact on the numbers that we received. There's still a large labor shortage in the construction industry, and we do believe that played a large part in the higher numbers, as well as the material supplying chain. We've talked to those in the industry, and we don't really anticipate that ending anytime soon. There is a constrained construction zone where they will be working. Access is limited. It's between fences. And so there's some extra costs for the extra handwork needed and access constraints. The linear nature of the trail lends itself to kind of different order of operation, and we also have a lot of environmental regulations, permits, and safety requirements as part of the project as well. So once we really kind of figured out what was causing the cost increase, we looked at two ways to determine the best path forward. One would be to reduce costs and the other to find additional funding. Regarding reduced costs, we have looked at our design. We have evaluated it again for various elements of the design that we could potentially reduce. Scope changes, design modifications that might result in some lower construction costs. If awarded, we would sit down immediately with the construction contractor, sharpen our pencils, figure out what are some items that we can modify. We've also talked to our partnering agencies and discussed potential items of the project that they might be able to help provide labor for. Maybe we can provide the materials and they can install fencing, posting cable fencing, tree plantings, and so on. And then we've also looked at the contingency. Typically, we authorize or request authorization of a 15% contingency. With this being such a large project, cost-wise, a 15% contingency is a lot, and a smaller contingency is warranted, so we are recommending a 10% contingency. So looking at additional funding, we, throughout the design, we knew that construction prices were on the rise, and we've consistently been applying for additional grants, trying to find more money for this. We were successful in securing about $230,000 in a park per capita grant for construction in Tempo Park. We've applied for other grants, but unfortunately have not been successful in securing additional funds. So one of the considerations tonight is to allocate an additional $75,000 in the city's park impact fees, or we hold them, the park impact fees for construction in the C-Bar-C Park. And another item for consideration tonight is a $2 million SACOG loan. It's an interest-free loan, no contingencies on this. SACOG has been a partner in this project as well. Trail construction aligns with a lot of their policies and guidelines, and they're, you know, excited to see the trail network in the Sacramento region. So they are looking and hoping that we can find a way to fund this and have offered a $2 million loan for us to move forward with. It's important to note, this isn't the first loan in the region. It won't be the last, as we are just at the tip of the iceberg, and a lot of projects are seeing cost overrides with their construction bids. So just a summary on the project funding. We have about $5.755 million in the various grants identified. A little over $2.5 million in local funds. None of these are general fund. They are Stormwater, Mejoray Bike Ped, and a couple other funding sources. We're looking at a $75,000 park impact fee, should you approve that tonight, and the $2 million SACOG loan. And where that money will go, the 8.466 will go to the construction contract award, although, as mentioned, we would look to reduce those costs immediately upon execution of the contract and the 10% contingency. We have a little over $800,000 for a construction management contract. This would be to fund a full-time inspector on the job to make sure that the product that we're getting out in the field matches the construction documents. Includes materials testing to make sure we're getting the proper materials, as well as construction engineering. $60,000 for our construction design support for our design engineer to review design, shop submissions, requests for information, clarity on the design, and technical submissions. And a $41,000 tree mitigation. As Casey mentioned, we are going to have to remove some trees, so the costs associated with that will go to the tree mitigation fund, which will then be used with additional city funds to pay for the Sacramento Tree Foundation contract. So throughout the life of the project, we've done a significant amount of public engagement. We've had numerous presentations, field meetings with neighbors and stakeholders. We've had our project website, and we've kept our frequently asked questions page up to date. We've been the subject of many media videos, articles, posts. And not typical for design projects, we released our final design plans to the public, received comments, incorporated what we could, and provided a response. And then we've, of course, done the trail naming campaign for Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project. And it's paying off. This is a house that recently sold on Claypool in June, and you can see at the bottom, the mere steps away from the new Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, so it is now a real estate selling point. So that's the end of our presentation. I have here the six items that are up for consideration tonight, and we have various members present. Should you have any questions from our partnering agencies and consultants?
Okay, I will start with any questions or comments from council. Mr. Miller.
Just a quick question. You might have mentioned it, and I missed it, but what's the contract completion date? And I know that could change with change orders and stuff.
Sure. So we're anticipating to start as soon as possible, so this fall, and it's 200 working days, so about a year to complete with weather incorporated.
Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. So the trail is 2.9 miles. But technically, does the trail end as you come out of Sundance Park and as you pick it up again on the other side of 7-Eleven?
Correct. So the paved portion of the trail will end at either location, but the alignment will continue, and we'll have wayfinding signs that direct you to where it picks up again.
And so the connection is Highwood to Woodmore Oaks?
Correct.
And then do you have an approximate cost of what the bridge in Sundance Park would be?
Yes, it was 385, I believe, or 390, 390,000.
And then of the approximate cost of the traffic signal that needs to get put in between Tempo and Sundance to cross over?
That I don't have handy. I would have to get back to you.
Would it be pretty standard? Those are usually about 175?
Traffic signals are much more expensive. They're probably more like a half a million.
A half a million dollars to put a traffic?
Yeah, this one is just a pedestrian crossing, so it might be, you know, maybe like 300,000. They're very expensive, yes.
Wow, okay. And then on the loan end, is there any language in what we're doing that says that, because that loan repayment is pretty aggressive. I think it's 1.5 million the next year?
That's what we would receive. The repayment is $500,000 per year for four years.
Okay. And then is there any language in what we're doing that says that general fund, funds cannot be used to repay that loan?
I don't, well, I would refer to Mary. I'm not sure if you would be able to comment on the stipulations of the loan. So we are finalizing the document for that, and we could absolutely write that into.
We would include that.
The MOU for repayment.
That we cannot use general fund.
That could be written in.
Okay. And then, so originally, it was supposed to be 6.2 million way back when, and we know how things can change, definitely. We hoped for 6.7, and we came back at 8.4, and with some other stuff that might get thrown in, 10 million. But you said you did look at design modifications and stuff like that, possibilities to do that kind of a thing?
Correct.
And then the final thing on, I just want to clarify that as you come out of Sundance Park and you go down Highwood, and then you turn, there's a cross, there's a stop sign there at Woodmore Oaks. And then you turn left to go down to the trail, which you have to cross the street, I'd be on the other side of the street at the 7-Eleven. There'll be no controlled, no traffic control there, no stop sign, no traffic signal. It's just that you should cross over at Woodmore Oaks, and you probably would if you'd been on the trail before. But if you didn't know, you might venture down and then decide, oh, I've got to cross the street now.
So with the project, we will be installing bulbouts and a crosswalk there, as well as the rectangular rapid flashing yellow lights where you push the button and it'll flash yellow for vehicles, so you can cross there in front of the 7-Eleven.
Okay. So it'll be, I understand what you're saying, yeah. And hopefully, if we do it that way, we can put in those high-visibility, really flashy things.
Yeah, that's what's proposed. Yes.
Okay, that's all my comments and questions right now.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You know, Brett did a pretty good job of hitting all the ones that I had.
Well, you gave him two.
Yeah.
No sharing notes, guys. Come on.
Nope.
Okay, I do have one additional question, and it's, what is the financial impact if we do not move forward with this? What will it cost the city?
So should we choose not to move forward? We would be essentially giving back the grant funds. We haven't spent the construction phase yet, but we have spent $660,000 throughout the design environmental. We would have to refund that money back to the granting agency and use other local funds to cover the costs that have already been expended.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, public comment. I have well over 13 pieces of paper here. I am going to limit comment from three minutes to two minutes, just to make sure that we are able to get everyone in to say things. I see some faces back.
Mayor, I'm going to object to that, and I don't know how the other council members feel. This is a very important project that's been going on for a very long time. We started our meeting early, so we're still early in the night. I think the people that have come here, who don't normally come here, and we see a crowd like this, deserve to be heard. I think we used to hear five minutes. I don't like that we hear only three minutes. To drop them to two minutes, I don't know what you can say in two minutes, you know, other than I don't want it. So I would like to ask you to reconsider and give them at least that three minutes.
Let me just say this. I think what we could ask is, I kind of with Brett on the three minutes, but please be succinct. Don't repeat yourself. You don't have to use the whole three minutes. And that's the big thing, is we get it. We're up here taking notes, so if you say something that is important, we're definitely recording it, so.
We're definitely, we're definitely, yeah, we definitely are.
Compromise suggestion.
Yes, okay, understood. We'll leave it at three minutes. I am taking them in the order that they were given to me, if that's okay with y'all. Kathy Morris?
Mix them up.
You get to be first.
First, I want to make it clear that I'm speaking for myself, not for my group. This is the individual. And I want to state that I've been working with them for a long time. I'm very concerned about the trail. I am very supportive of it. I have been involved with the Auburn, Old Auburn Trail, and I can tell you from a personal experience, there's a lot of people on that trail that couldn't, would not be able to walk if it had not been worked on properly. The cleaning, the visibility, the patrolling, when you clean up the area, the people have a place to walk. It's safer. We can see what's going on. The police can control it better, and we in the neighborhood can get out better. When we've got a place to go, we do it. So I appreciate also that the city keeps us involved with it all the way along. When we have problems, we can discuss it. And that, as long as we continue to keep those communication channels open, I can continue to support. This is an excellent project. Although it is expensive, I understand that. It is also something that keeps our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Mitchell.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Dave Mitchell. I'm the district administrator for Sunrise Recreation and Park District, the park district here in Citrus Heights. We are extremely excited to support the trail system. It runs through seven of our parks, including the new park that's coming online, Mitchell Village. So starting in Arcade Creek, kind of works through many, many of our parks. The items have been in front of our board several times. Our master plans have been updated. Our SEQA documents are all done. And so I just wanted to stop by and say that on behalf of the park district, we're very excited for the trail system to go in, and we thank you for your consideration. In the park business, you know, swimming pools are important, and recreation programs, after-school programs are all important. But 80% of visitors to the park system are passive park users, walkers, people enjoy the park, just come to enjoy. The trail system meets about 80%, at least, of the demand in the park system. Park systems are built for people to come. We're very excited to have the community even more come to our park system. So thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. John Barth?
Nene? My name is John Barth. I live at the corner of Orrell Creek Court and Old Auburn Road. Most of you will know I am the house that has the big redwood tree during Christmas. When it first came out, I was not in favor of the bike trail next to my house. I was worried about... I was worried about dirt, people spending too much time there, garbage. Well, in fact, it's completely different than what I anticipated. It's kept up, it's clean, it's well lit. We have one neighbor that picks up every day, walks the whole entire one-mile stretch. We have 10 of my neighbors walk it. Every single day, there's 10 to 20 people walking that trail. I don't walk it because I have arthritis in my feet, but I will use the other one because I can ride a bike, and it goes three miles. And you can ride it into, from what I'm seeing here, you can ride it right into Citrus Town Center and have a good old time. So I'm in favor. I appreciate your time, and I hope it goes.
Thank you. Chris Daughtry?
Thank you, Mayor Middleton, members of the council. Chris Daughtry with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. I'm the funding and grants manager for CACOG, and I'm here tonight to talk about, to be in support of this project. This project, almost three miles of new trail, is one of the first trails that'll help us move that vision forward for our regional trail network that we are about to adopt, I believe, next week. So this is a really important project that we see for our region as we try to create more, better interconnected trail network throughout. I mean, this has great connectivity to Folsom into the American River Bike Trail, so we're really excited as an agency for this project to move forward. We have supported this project through funding, whether through the regional ATP program for the design, but also through this loan, because we understand that right now, things are changing rapidly in this industry. We're seeing really massive changes across our region and the state when it comes to cost increases. We're hearing agencies reporting a 27% cost increase annually over multiple years since the pandemic. So we are happy that we are able to be in a position to support this project moving forward. We do these loans, this is not unusual for us, we do one or two a year. It's one of the many tools that we have as an agency to support our local jurisdictions as one of the primary funders of active transportation projects and road projects moving forward. So with that, I'm happy to give back about a minute and a half of comments and speed this along, but I'm available for any questions you might have.
I appreciate that, and I apologize for the mispronunciation of your name.
It's okay. Every dozen.
Thank you.
Still going to give us the 2 million that I have?
I hope so. Hope I didn't mess it up. Gosh. Tony Snyder?
Hi. I live on Highwood Way, and the park, the trail is going to be right down the street from me. And I'm all, I'm okay with it. I don't personally think there's going to be that many people on bicycles crossing Fair Oaks Boulevard with a five-year-old on a bike, nor Sunrise Boulevard to make this, but that's just my opinion. My concern is the safety. I live on Highwood Way. When I come out to turn onto Woodmore Oaks, nobody stops the stop signs. I think they think it's just a suggestion. So I'm just so afraid with the bicycles, something has to be done with those stop signs. Something has to be done to have lights on that street. I don't know if any of you have ever been on Highwood Way. You two probably have, yes? It's a very narrow street, very narrow street. I'm freaked that I'm going to back up and run over somebody on a bicycle. So that makes me nervous. I need streetlights, I need flashing lights on a stop sign, and I need our lovely police guys to sit at that corner, because people just run those stop signs all the time, all the time. It's frightening. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Turan.
Good evening. Not the order I was expecting, but that's fine. I live in the neighborhood as well. I'm over on Old Ranch Road, and I'm really here in support of my neighbors. A couple of things that I want to address. One is the bridge over there in Sundance Park. I understand that they want to raise that up five feet, and we do have an engineer that I think will be, a retired engineer that I think will be speaking tonight in regards to, does that really need to be done? And I suggest that maybe it does not, and you might recoup some costs that way. Raising it up five feet, I think is going to be quite expensive, and you also run the risk of creating an area for, I'll say, people that we may not want to congregate there. We already have graffiti going on there. And then in regards to Highwood Way, the path that goes there, once they hit Highwood Way, I think that's an unincorporated area. It's kind of dark on that street, and if we're promoting lots of people going through there, my concern would be safety, and I'm supporting my neighbors in that. Thank you.
Thank you. David, I'm going to butcher it, sorry, Oberg?
Hello, I'm here to talk about the Highwood Way stop signs and Drywood stop signs. We all agree with the Neighborhood Watch people that they need to have better stop signs, like the ones you have at the hospitals where they go around and flash. Second, that there shouldn't be a crosswalk across where the 7-Eleven is. You have to direct the people to not go there. No, if they want to jaywalk, you can't stop them. Now, the thing is with people on bikes, the same thing. You have them coming out of that bike trail. If you've seen that bike trail, it's going to be, they're going to be hitting that street, Woodmore, at 20 or 30 miles an hour. So in Lincoln, California, where I have a brother that lives, they have trails. They have them go across crosswalks. A few months ago, I went to see my brother. They have fences across those trails, saying to those people, you can't go 30 miles an hour or 20 miles an hour across that crosswalk, because you got to have to come to practically a stop. And so while I was there taking pictures, a little boy comes by, he had to slow down. He didn't have to get off his bike, but he had to slow down. I mean, unless you want to fall down and hit the fence. So he went across the crosswalk because he has time to look to see if there is nobody coming, and they also have the chance to not hit him, because they can see him, or people that are walking, or people that are running. People that are running want to do their two miles or three miles in a certain amount of time, they might not want to stop. So that's why you put a fence there, they might jump around someplace else and get out of the way. And again, in the sense of jaywalking, they'll jaywalk. But mainly, the thing is that people that go on the trail will find out that they can go across Highwood Way or Woodmore at both Drywood and Highwood Way by putting it, just like I saw just tonight. You guys put some green-colored for bike trails, or bicycles, I should say, that are coming from Fair Oaks, and I just saw it today, and I usually take Fair Oaks quite a bit down to Greenback, and this will just highlight the people that go across there and not across. And like I say, you can't stop people from jaywalking. If they jaywalk and get hit by a car, you know, and another thing is that if you put a stop sign there with a person putting in the, I've stopped, people get just off because they got to do that, an extra stop within 150 feet of Drywood.
Thank you. Next is Gloria Turner.
Come on, Gloria. It's long, Gloria. I don't really want to talk. Thank you for being here tonight to listen to us. So I've lived in Orangeville for 48 years, okay? I live on Chipwood. Highwood is here, Chipwood is here. The park comes out right here, and it goes Highwood and Chipwood, okay? We have already had people impacting our street of Chipwood, because it's an easier street to go on. Highwood goes up and down, and it goes around things. We've even had a motorhome on Highwood and big trucks on Highwood blocking the roads. On Chipwood, it's more level. Yes, it has corners you cannot see around. My husband and I have been very careful driving Chipwood and Highwood for years, because we had a head-on collision by a young lady on Highwood who was not watching where she was going. We have come up to the point where Chipwood and Highwood meet, where the park comes out, and there have been mothers pushing baby buggies and strollers, and they're in the middle of the street, in the middle of the street, because they think it's still a part of the park. Now, somebody painted a yellow straight line around the corner there. You can't stay on either side of those stupid yellow straight lines. That's a narrow area, and it's very dangerous. And I'm very concerned about Chipwood and Highwood. We love our people, and Tom and I helped to build Sundance Park a whole long time ago. All the houses that were built in the neighborhood had to put in a certain amount of money for the park to be built, okay? And the trail goes right directly from across the street to our park and goes through it. They want to move the trail to a totally different place, which is going to be very dangerous for the people that walk and drive their bicycles. You need to take a really good look at that, where it is right now, and where they want to change it to. They have had a problem with people living in the great big, what do you call those, drain pipes? And they started fires in the drain pipes, and stole things from the neighborhood, and they had them in the drain pipes. And they, the police have been trying to be really good about keeping them out of there. See, I have too much to say. When we moved there, we had every animal you could ever want, and we could see all the way to Sunrise, and we got to watch the mall being built from my kitchen window. In the meantime, everything has filled in, okay? It's been really for the best, because there were fires being started, and we haven't had any fires, thank God. Anyway, I don't know if I should get the heck off of this or keep yada-yadaing. A lot of trees have been taken down already, which makes it not cool. When the trees were up, it made a nice, cool walk through the park, and people took their dogs there all the time. They clean up, they clean up after them. But the, a lot of trees have been taken down, and then Smudd is the one that's saying that they needed to do it, but they weren't involved in any of the, of the wires or in any of the towers.
I want to be respectful of the folk.
It was just absolutely, I don't understand why those trees were taken down. And we have seen a lot more animals coming too. We have a skunk now that likes our place. Okay, I live in a neighborhood with a happy skunk.
If you could wrap up, please.
Oh, thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Lisa Montes?
Mayor Middleton, council members, thank you for having us today. My name is Lisa Montes, and I'm with the Orangeville Recreation and Park District, one of the partners on this project, and we're very excited to be connecting not only our neighborhood and our folks and residents, but to connect with Citrus Heights and other communities as well. There's a lot of concerns for safety and a lot of concerns in regards to cost. A lot of that, a lot of concerns have already been addressed and redesigned by your team. They've taken a tremendous effort to take everyone's concerns into consideration and have done a fabulous job. We at the park district are just so excited about this and hope that if there's anything that we can do within our means, that we'll be sure to help as far as cost and other items. Our goal is to always keep our residents and our community safe, but also to provide an opportunity for everyone in our community to utilize the parks and to gather. So I'm excited about bike trails. I'm excited about more visibility when you're walking and the safety of that, the safety of emergency vehicles on those bridges that are being redone. So thank you, thank you to the team. We appreciate you listening to all of us.
Thank you. Dennis Turner?
I want to commend the team for having the field meetings, listening to us out there in the field, also having the presentations. That initial presentation was very, very well done, but I have concerns that they probably addressed a small percentage of what was said at those meetings by the people that live in the community there. I know that some of them, they couldn't, but to me, they've turned a deaf ear on a few things, like the heights of that bridge is a real concern for a lot of people in that area, and I don't know why it has to be that high, because the flood plain, a 100-year flood plain is not that high. And I think a retired civil engineer is going to address that here a little later. But I want to thank you for allowing us to come and hear us out anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Anderson?
Good evening. My name is Neil Anderson. I'm a resident of Orangeville and a retired civil engineer who has experience with bridges and other civil engineering structures. In February of 2022, I sent a formal letter to the City of Citrus Heights to voice my opinion that the existing bridge across Arcade Creek and Sundance Park can be refurbished and that it's not necessary to build a completely new bridge. City of Citrus Heights sent me a letter addressing each of my concerns, but I remain unsatisfied by their responses. My position is that the existing bridge can be upgraded to comply with safety standards. I asked for as-built drawings of the existing bridge to make an assessment of the fitness of the bridge. What was provided did not reflect the structure that was actually built in the late 90s. The bridge presently on site does not match the as-built drawings. The engineering report indicates that the existing bridge deck during the 100-year flood will be overtopped by approximately four inches. A bridge does not have to be raised simply because it will be overtopped by the 100-year flood. Overtopping does not necessarily result in failure. Citrus Heights indicated that FEMA requires that the new bridge must be built to clear the 100-year floodwater surface by a certain amount, resulting in the need to build a new bridge five feet higher than the existing bridge. I was not able to locate the specific FEMA requirement that demands that a pedestrian bridge be constructed to this standard. In summary, the existing bridge can be refurbished and upgraded at a fraction of the cost of the new bridge planned to be constructed five feet higher than the old bridge. I became interested in this project when I first heard about the necessity of providing access to fire engine traffic through Sundance Park as a shortcut from Fair Oaks Boulevard to the housing, to houses on the east side. The existing bridge and the bridge to be built are pedestrian bridges, not highway bridges. This traffic should not be allowed. If the traffic, if the city wants the new bridge to accommodate fire engines, they need to build a highway bridge over Arcade Creek. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Point of privilege, please, from Leslie, if you could just briefly address, because it's a common theme specifically with the bridge, why the need for it to lift it five feet and the requirements, and therefore all that other stuff?
Sure. So FEMA does have a requirement, any new construction must be outside the floodway and above the 100-year base flood elevation. During the initial onset of the project, we did have a design consultant. During the initial onset of the project, we did have a design consultant who did the hydraulic analysis to determine the elevation of that 100-year base flood elevation and the new bridge is set above that within accordance of FEMA's regulations. The need to replace the bridge essentially comes down to ADA. The bridge currently does not meet ADA, the existing timber planks, it doesn't have a handrail and such. And so anytime we make those improvements, we are therefore adding impediments to the floodway, which then triggers us to have to remove it out of that floodway and above that 100-year base flood elevation.
Thank you. So while we're making sure that we're building a trail system that is accommodating for all folks, we have to make sure that it's actually truly accommodating for all folks with all abilities. Thank you for that.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Absolutely.
I know it's been given to us before. I'm sorry, I don't have it and I can't recall it. How long of a ramp on each side of the bridge is going to be required to raise the bridge five feet?
I believe it's about 150 feet. Because we have to raise that elevation in order to get to that elevation from the existing trail, ADA also specifies the maximum slope that we're allowed to install. And so we're going the maximum we're allowed and the minimum ramp that we can legally install.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not even going to do this last name. Tom? Oh, I'm going to miss. I'm going to mess that up. I'm not even going to embarrass myself.
He'll help you.
Welcome, I'm back again. Where could I put these so you guys can see them? I mean, it's all the holes, I want to read.
I think we could pass them between us.
I also have packets here that basically identify.
There we go.
Teamwork, love it.
Very nice.
So I'm going to just go ahead and read what I had written here, then pictures will kind of, you know, talk to themselves. So anyway, my name is Tom DiGiacomo, I'm the president of the Woodmore Oaks Neighborhood Watch, representing many neighbors who expressed their concerns since the first meeting of this trail project back in 2019. As I mentioned before at this meeting, many neighbors were in opposition of this project. And I have been on a mission to change their mindsets because this project was going to happen no matter what. And I shared with them, as well as previously at this meeting, that the train has left a station. So let's make it a safe journey for our community. And that's what I've been fighting for, for the last three or so years. So we had, the community has come up with four main concerns that they wanted to express. One of them is the street lighting on Highwood and Woodmore Oaks Drive. That was one of the biggest concerns. Number two was solar blinking stop signs on the intersections of Woodmore Oaks Drive and Highwood, as well as Woodmore Oaks and Drywood close to the 7-Eleven. Reason being, no one sees the existing stop signs that are there right now. So solar stop signs, which is a picture of one out there, that was taken actually at the VA hospital. So they're visible, you can see them. Reason of the, number three, reason of the existing pedestrian bridge, and I want to emphasize the word pedestrian, because that's exactly what they're going to build over, a pedestrian bridge that's there right now, they want to put another pedestrian bridge on there. Casey mentioned at our February 4th meeting with the neighbors that day, when County Supervisor Sue Frost was there, the Orangeville Park, Lisa was there, as well as other members of the park, that fire trucks will need to cross over the bridge. The old and potential new bridge are pedestrian bridges. Therefore, no fire trucks go over a pedestrian bridge. So like the engineer mentioned, if we're going to have a bridge that's going to service emergency vehicles, we need to have a constructed commercial type of a bridge. I don't think you can put a fire truck over a pedestrian bridge. That's my understanding of it, and that's what the civil engineer kind of explained to us too. But that's important to understand that. It's a pedestrian bridge, they want to put another pedestrian bridge there. When they came out there that day on that meeting, Casey mentioned, well, we need to put a bridge in to put fire trucks all over it. Well, that changed everybody's mindset that day, and I seen that. And I myself changed a little bit, saying, I agree to that, okay? But that ain't what happened on a pedestrian bridge. It will happen on a commercial. So we got kind of fooled on that scenario, knowing that they want to put another pedestrian bridge in, but yet they can't service fire trucks over that bridge, a pedestrian bridge. Okay, so let me go on. The fourth item was entrance to the Sundance Park and Fair Oaks Boulevard. Moving existing entrance over towards the bridge, that is also, was already a homeless encampment and fires are already going on, is not necessary. So as you can see, the pictures of the existing bridge right there that has fire encampment, fires going on, they want to move the existing entrance right now over towards that bridge. And that's, where it is right now is perfect. There's no reason to move it. In fact, when you come out of Tempo Park, you're almost in line of sight of where the entrance is to Sundance. So why do you want to move it way down over there where it's kind of out of line of sight and yet next to a homeless encampment? So that makes no sense, and that hopefully will save the city money if you just leave it like it is. We don't need to move that entrance. Okay. In 2019, many neighbors asked to have the whole trail lighted. Casey mentioned in an email, which is, I have it up here.
Tom, if you could please wrap it up, please.
I'm trying, not fast as I could, okay? Casey mentioned December 16th that these community meetings have led to project improvements and refinement, including lighting of the entire trail, okay? That was totally important to all of us, lighting of the entire trail. The project map, which you guys have seen your packet there, shows that Highwood Way and Woodmore Oaks are on that map. That's part of the trail. And now all of a sudden, it's not part of the trail. That makes no sense to us out there as far as neighbors go. And since that, it won't be lighted.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have David Huber.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. My name is David Huber. I serve as the board chair for Sunrise Rock and Park District. I'm here to express my enthusiastic support for the proposed Arcade Creek Trail, excuse me. One of the things that we continually hear from our residents in the Park District is a desire for more walking options from the streets. This almost three-mile-long trail system will provide new options for recreation and increase connectivity for a large portion of Citrus Heights. It will connect a diverse network of trails and be conveniently accessible to multiple neighborhoods promoting an active lifestyle and community engagement. Additionally, through the project, multiple parks and schools will be connected as well as Sunrise Marketplace. On behalf of Sunrise Park and Recreation District, thank you for the vision and leadership to create this new amenity that will increase the quality of life for all Citrus Heights residents. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll keep it quick so we can go home. I totally support and am very excited about this trail plan. Quality of life is huge, especially when looking at real estate values and also who doesn't love to take their kids to a nice, safe trail. I do believe going to a lot of trails in the area, that once people know that there's a trail that exists, that traffic around the area adapts. So, but I'm sure you guys will address that. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you again. So much easier when you're not first, right? All right, so my comments here are kind of in alignment. This is the first time I'm hearing about the project and as a clean-air commuter and somebody who lives close to the American River Bike Trail, it's a very important part of our life, very important part of my family's life. And I think that the community engagement is something that, especially because of COVID, we're rethinking what togetherness really means from this point forward. So I absolutely support the project and I appreciate the environmental and the safety considerations that have gone into this proposal. And lastly, I will say that in existing bike trails that have been in here for a really long time, we've seen improvements along the way, such as speed bumps and different signs and things like that, that can help safe traffic maneuvering as we're adapting to the new trail system. So I just want to say thank you for this presentation and I hope that it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And that just leads nicely into my next question for staff, which is, is there an opportunity for traffic calming measures?
So where the trail crosses public streets, we have incorporated traffic calming. The String Avenue crossing is actually a raised crosswalk, so essentially a speed hump for vehicles as they travel there. We have the rectangular rapid flashing beacons to increase awareness for vehicles. Bowl bouts will be installed, which will help increase visibility for pedestrians and also lane narrowing to reduce vehicular speeds at those crossings.
Thank you. Okay, I expect a fully robust conversation from my colleagues.
Mayor, I do have two individuals on Zoom that would like to speak.
I am so sorry, folks on Zoom.
So I will go ahead and start with the first raised hand, Peg Pennard. You can now unmute yourself to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think what's happening tonight is that you're hearing people who are in favor of trails and nobody is questioning that. People that are here tonight and testifying who live in the neighborhood are aware of some of the dangerous areas that they are hoping that you will take into consideration. They are giving you ideas, like the fence to slow people down as they approach a street crossing, as well as other suggestions for you to take. I hope you will heed and not let people feel like they wasted their time in coming and trying to talk to you. After having given input at every stage of the project, I have two points to make tonight. One is that the most destructive and expensive options have been taken at every turn. You were quoted about the bridge and what they're not saying is that there were other options for a pedestrian bridge crossing a small creek. The idea that it had to be raised to be ADA accessible is simply not correct. Nothing is more ADA accessible than a level plane. To have to navigate in a wheelchair or stroller or whatever people are using up 150-foot ramp just to get to the bridge is not ADA friendly to anybody. And if you haven't been in a wheelchair trying to go up 150-foot ramp, I suggest that you please try it. Allowing the bridge to be level is an option under the Army Corps of Engineer and under the different regulatory agencies. It's just not the first option. So you would need to work with them to get it, and there are plenty of examples even across the American River where bridges have been enacted that do not meet that particular standard and yet serve as a pedestrian crossing very, very adequately. I refer you to Neil Anderson, who had pictures to show you existing ones and take it from there. The second point that I would like to make is the pictures that you were shown are not accurate. You were shown pictures with beautiful trees overhanging the trail. That's not what's going to happen in the Sundance woodland natural area. With the dimensions that were given, it is going to look more like the miners' trail, which is, if you've been there lately with the amount of heat in Sacramento, nobody's on it because it is so dang hot. There is not the shade canopy that you were showing in the pictures. Not only that, but the numbers that you were given about how few trees are going to need to be taken down, meaning 50-something, that slide went by quickly, ignores the fact that 210 trees have already been cut down. So I think that a certain level of honesty needs to be on here and the environmental impact is extremely important. We are in the middle of a carbon, of a climate change crisis and there was absolutely no accountability for the carbon sequestration impacts that will come from having taken down 210 trees plus 50 more or even more than that as time moves on. The last point is something you can still do something about. You can recognize that not all trees have a single trunk, that even fallen trees provide a habitat for birds, small animals, and beneficial insects. You can direct your staff to not approach the woodland, this is a woodland, not just a bike trail, as some kind of room that needs to be stripped and vacuumed. The idea that there wouldn't be any attraction for the bridge, I wanted to just make that one more point, because there's rocks underneath it, belies the fact of almost every other bridge in Sacramento area. And I would suggest that you talk with the fire chiefs about what their experience is. People have no problem laying on those bridges and starting fires in them.
Thank you for your comments.
And I have one more raised hand from Daniel Kerr. You can now unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you so much and thank you, Ms. Mayor and council members, for holding this hearing. My name is Daniel Kerr. I'm actually the consultant, project manager, and engineer on the project. I'm also a member of Sacramento County and a future trail user. Just wanted to provide my support for the project and the design and really recognizing a lot of the familiar faces we've seen throughout the design process and just rest assured, we are doing, we have done our best to incorporate your comments. Those comments regarding the trail extension leading up to the bridge being a very steep 150-foot ramp, I just wanted to clarify that the reason it is 150 feet long is because we've made it very gentle and shallow intentionally to make it not so much of a difficult climb for those mobility impaired. And then my final update was for you, Councilmember Daniels, that new traffic signal at Fair Oaks Boulevard was bid to be $369,090. Thank you very much, I yield the remainder of my time.
Okay.
And that was all of the raised hands that I saw on Zoom.
Great. All right. We have several motions, but I know there's going to be a robust discussion. It's not a public hearing. No, no, I was paying attention.
Did we close the public hearing?
It's not a public, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Right?
Close the public hearing?
My God, people.
Just looking up.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of questions, a robust discussion. This is something that we've all been very passionate about. I remember when this came before the planning commission, when I was on the planning commission, and we have come a long, long way. And I want to make sure that we're having a very thorough discussion and being very thoughtful about our next actions. So any comments from council?
I do have a question, please, on the, I'm not, I know I've seen it, but I'm not familiar with the alignment of the sidewalk on Woodmore Oaks and what the issue is there. Is there a way to pull that up or at least?
Woodmore Oaks regarding the stop sign at Highwood?
The crosswalk, I keep hearing, you know, in a
The 7-Eleven crosswalk?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Isn't that?
I think that's, yeah.
I was just trying to understand the issue there a little better.
So on Woodmore Oaks by 7-Eleven, I believe that's the crosswalk that you're going to. So right now, there is no crosswalk there. It is mid-block, it is not at an intersection. So if one were, under the current conditions to exit where the future trail will be, there is no crosswalk there. The trail will install a safe crossing, so it will be a striped crosswalk with pedestrian bowl bouts. We will be narrowing the travel lanes, reducing speeds. We have a rectangular flashing beacon that will be installed there. So you push the button, those really bright, rapid, they're irregular patterns, so they don't turn into background noise as you're driving by. They stand out, they have a high rate of compliance.
I get that, but I thought I heard there was an issue with the alignment, where it crossed.
I think you're, some of the neighbors have had concerns with shifting of the crossing of Fair Oaks Boulevard between Sundance and Tempo. Currently, where the sidewalk is, you kind of cross to the south of the tennis courts for a variety of reasons, I'll probably let Leslie explain, it makes more sense to have the trail further to the north of the tennis courts for line of sight and safety reasons.
Right, that I was familiar with, I just was wondering what the issue was, is the entrance. And that would be at the Woodmore Oaks 7-Eleven, that's the entrance to the Sundance area, correct?
That leads up past 7-Eleven to string open space. The Sundance entrance is on, between Highwood and Fair Oaks Boulevard.
Okay, got it.
And just to follow up on that, Steve, when we went to National Night Out and that 7-Eleven, they had their event there, the most terrifying time of my life was I had the chief of police with me stopping traffic and I still believed I was going to get hit by a car because there is no crosswalk there.
It was pretty crazy. I did go out there myself, too. Okay, thank you. The, we talked about replacing trees. How many and where are they going? Other parts of the city, Orangeville, along the trail?
Yeah, we've worked closely with our partner agencies, Sunrise and Orangeville. Yeah, we've worked closely with our partner agencies, Sunrise and Orangevale Parks, to find locations. We are adding shade trees where we can. Again, unfortunately, the smud power lines, they have to be shorter there, so.
Sure, they can kill growers.
Yeah, and I did want to address some of the comments raised about trees being removed. That did happen about a year ago, I'd say smud, part of their fire prevention safety program, removed a bunch of trees unfortunately. That's kind of what their MO is right now, no one wants to start fires and that's something that they did inform us of, is unfortunate. And we, we're not a part of that and we do hope that there's shade on the trail as a result of these trees in a few years to make it more comfortable.
Okay, well hopefully we can work with both our residents and our friends from Orangevale to make sure we get some good plantings because I know we've been doing a lot of tree mitigation with the projects going out through town and I don't think we've run out of places to plant trees, but if we could put them along the trail, all the better. The street lighting concerns me and mainly because, we just talked about this last week with the lighting assessment district, I mean, that isn't within our city and I think the residents within so many feet of a light would have to pay for it. The county would just not put it in for them. And so that's the tough part is I don't even know what the process is and I don't know that the county department of transportation wants us messing with their signage, their stop signs and such, but that, have we reached out to their transportation folks for these type of resolutions?
We have. We have passed on the residents' concerns to Sacramento County Department of Transportation. We met on site with the residents and the county traffic engineer discussed their request for the flashing red stop signs and the streetlights. I do believe that Sac County has installed some pedestrian safety signage up there. I'm not sure what their plans are in the future, but I do know that they have been informed and have made some attempts to address.
Okay. And, you know, folks, we don't want to raise the bridge. We put a railing on that and FEMA says that it can impede the flow of floodwaters. If that happens, FEMA can actually say, well, upstream from this, they need to now pay the mandatory flood insurance because of what Citrus Heights did. We don't want to do it. It is an expensive thing. It'd be lovely just to go straight across. And whether we call it a pedestrian bridge, a fire truck bridge, it's got to meet the weight limits or the fire department won't even approve it. We've had to, we've had a few resident bridges put in throughout town over the years. One was an old railroad car, flat car, and the fire department said, we can't drive our trucks across that and they had to do an engineered crossing. So whatever we call it, it's still, we still need to get an ambulance down there in case of a heart attack, stroke, what have you, an emergency, skin, knee, whatever. Okay. I think that answers all my questions.
Okay. Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, you want us to do comments and questions or just questions or?
Dealer's choice.
Okay. So on the lighting, just to follow up, was Supervisor Frost brought into that discussion?
Yes, she was at that same meeting.
Okay, and it seems like, you know, if we're putting up and through other, you know, different various funds, you know, $8 million, you would hope that the county would step up and say, you know, gee, that's wonderful and here's a little something extra. I think if this moves forward tonight, which I think it will, I think that's just something we have to stay on because it's going to happen. It's just going to happen and then they'll put the lights in. You know, somebody will get smashed and then they'll put the lights in. So let's not give up on that, please. And then, seems kind of silly, but in reading the report, the staff report and all the contracts and whatever, it had a list of trees that could be used as replacement trees. Can we remove cottonwoods from that? Please.
We could certainly look at that. Yeah, we do have a couple of trees that need to be replaced as part of our fishing game requirement, have to be riparian trees and that's why cottonwoods were made a part of that, but we can.
Anything but, if we could, just please, just.
We could certainly. As long as you're digging the hole, we'll put whatever you want.
So I'm going to make some crazy comments and then we'll move on. I think that Tom's right, the train has left the station. You know, it is, this project's moving forward. I'm going to support this project tonight, but I'm going to make a suggestion and then we'll see if it goes anywhere and if it doesn't, you know, it'll just be something that maybe later that we can even examine at some point. Because I was encouraged by you saying that, that you did look at design modifications. So if you looked at them, that means they can happen. They can still happen on some, on some level. And so when I look at this, I got to be really gentle with my words. Sundance Park is not a very attractive place, is the way I'm going to put it, because it is in its natural state and it's much more attractive during the winter when the grass turns green and stuff like that and during our, you know, hot summers, hot, dry summers and stuff like that. You know, at least for me, it offers nothing attractive or whatever. And so including Sundance Park in this trail, it causes a lot of cause. There's a lot of cost, there's a lot of concern, there's the safety concerns, there's the bridge and all of that. And when I went out and looked at it, I looked at, okay, well, you know, you can't just gripe, you got to come up with possible solutions, too. And one thing that I noticed is that there's not much difference in going through the park and coming out on Highwood and going over to 7-Eleven than there is just going up a little bit up Fair Oaks Boulevard and turning right on Woodmore Oaks and you're right at 7-Eleven. They actually both come out to six tenths of a mile, exactly the same. That's a break in the trail, which we don't like, that idea, but we've got a break in the trail on the other end of Highwood, too. So either way is a break in the trail. The bike lanes are very wide along those two streets, there are sidewalks along those two streets, and there's three controlled intersections with stop signs that allow somebody to go over to the north side of the road for Woodmore Oaks where the trail continues. In doing that, I wrote down a few things. You eliminate the concern of crossing over Fair Oaks Boulevard from Tempo, even if we have a light or whatever, people really haul on that street. They do, it's wide open and I have a real concern with the idea of children crossing that street, even in, with a traffic light, even controlled. It's a big concern. It eliminates the cost of a traffic signal at Tempo, from going over from Tempo to Sundance. It eliminates the safety concerns of going through that park. I don't understand why anybody would go through that park at night, but people might. And especially when I look at that, I go like, you know who's going to do that? And that's going to be younger people. It's going to be teenagers and like that, who you can really cut a lot off your time if you go through Sundance Park, if you live all far off of Woodmore Oaks and Highwood in that area. And a lot of people do, they really, a lot of people do. And it eliminates the cost of the bridge and the concerns that go across our Creek at, in Sundance Park. And now we've learned that between the bridge there and the signal to get over there, to go over the bridge, we're talking a ballpark figure of about $750,000 and maybe even some additional added cost. And then it eliminates the danger, excuse me, I missed one in here, I know that, it eliminates the concern of having to go down Highwood. If you pick up or go click on Google Maps, Highwood, and you click along it, you're going to see two people who look like they've come out of the park and they're walking right down the middle of the street. I was just, I had to laugh when I saw it. It was just like, oh my God. That's exactly what we don't want you to do. And then again, the bicycles and the concerns of the people that are going to be living there and backing out onto that street and cars on each side and you've got very little room, very little line of sight and all of that. And then, and then it eliminates the danger of crossing over Woodmore Oaks at 7-Eleven. Again, people that use the trail hopefully would know, you know, hey, cross over at Woodmore Oaks and Highwood, don't go down the street.
Oh, there we go.
But people don't do that. They'll see that as, that's going to add another 10 feet to my walk, I'm going to turn left here, walk over and I'm going to walk across the street. And again, my biggest concern is it'll be younger people that do that because they just don't have that, I think, conceptualized idea of it's just safer to use the crosswalk. And so even if that flashing crosswalk is there and all of that, that's kind of a curved area, you know, and you don't have a straight line of sight, I don't believe, as you come into that. And so I just have a big concern for that. So again, it provides wide bike lanes and sidewalks up Fair Oaks and Woodmore Oaks. It provides three stop signs, control opportunities to cross the street, and it's basically the same distance. So that's my words. The train has left the station and this is going to pass tonight and it should. I want to thank you guys, you've worked so hard on this and you've had to put up with a lot during that timeframe. I wasn't really on board with this project in the beginning. I'm fully on board with it and I want to really, really thank you for the hard work that you've put into it because I know it hasn't been easy. It's been probably pretty frustrating at times, but that's it and that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So number one, great job, Councilmember Daniels, for articulating such great detail. And I was out there in the early February, right after I got elected. I was there to listen and that's what I feel my role has been through this whole process is listening and reading, reading all the emails. And I do want to address Ms. Pennard's comment about whether people feel like this is a waste of their time. There was a time in 2014 where I was passionate about an issue here in the city and we came to a pretty reasonable compromise and this building turned out to be that compromise. So what I would say is, none of this is wasted effort. I can tell you, all of you, for coming here, thank you. Thank you for putting out the effort, for making us aware of what your wishes are because we care about not only Citrus Heights community, but we care about the community in general. So I would say that any great idea will stand up to a great debate and I think we've had a good debate here. So with that, I am going to support the project and I would hope that, and again, to our city engineer and our community services director, fantastic job. You guys have worked really hard, you've listened, you compromised, you've tried to incorporate all of the concerns with the, with the, with the community. And I think we're at a place where we can, we can move forward. I am very concerned about the financial obligation that we're embarking on with this. This is a, this is a big concern, but fortunately, it's not infeasible. I'd love to see if we could, what we can do to reduce the cost, but with that, I will support the, this project.
Great. Again, I concur with everything that's been said up here tonight. I want you all to know that we've been working very hard on this, we've listened. I sit on the Board of SACOG as a director. I've watched this project from start to finish. I've been passionate about creating pathways for regional trails, making sure that our city and the surrounding unincorporated areas are incorporated into what the feeling of Citrus Heights is, which is about family, community, safety, and being able to get around and bring in more folks who, you know, who will want to enjoy nature. I know there's been multiple times that you, we've heard it, that how many times we've won, you know, the Tree City Award, right? We're passionate about what we do here in this community. We work hard and we make sure that we are listening to what you say. So while this has been a very good debate, a lot of things have come up that I had not previously considered and I'm definitely hopeful the staff will take into consideration, will figure out a way to make it as perfect as possible, knowing that such, it's an aspiration, it's not going to be that, it's not going to check everyone's boxes. But understand that we hear you, we respect everything that you said tonight, and we're going to do the best that we can. And with that, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question and I'm probably getting way ahead of the game because we're just talking about constructing the darn trail now. But maintenance, is that, that going to be 100% our responsibility?
No, so the maintenance will be the responsibility of the underlying property owner, so each park district would be responsible at that point in time. The portions that are outside the parks would be city's responsibility, that's about 30% of the alignment.
Okay, that's helpful. And yes, I do want to say thank you for everyone and their comments. It makes a better project and don't go away thinking we weren't listening. We are listening and we're, I'd like to find a solution for the street lighting through the county as well and the, any kind of, I call it opposition, but it's really not opposition, but it makes a project better. Tim, you alluded to that and I think we're all going to be at the ribbon cutting and be happy with what we've, what we've done. Mark my words on that. And if we screw something up, we're famous for fixing it, okay? And that happens, it's just unforeseen conditions. We put a roundabout in, we had semi-trucks that couldn't make the turn and were driving over, it was behind a shopping center, we took it out. It was, it looked good on the drawing board. So this, this is not set, well, some of it's going to be set in concrete, like the bridge piers, but we can, we'll work it out. Your input, keep it coming, we appreciate it. And I know this construction is going to be a little disruptive for some of the neighbors. I can only promise problems along that line, but we'll get through it, we'll get done, we'll try and keep the dust down and I am in support of this project.
Wonderful. Who wants to take the lead on giving the motion?
I'll take the first motion.
All right.
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California approving the use of park facilities, impact fees in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Arcade Creek, Arcade, Cripple Creek Trail Project.
Motion by Schaefer, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll take the next one. Adopt a resolution, City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California approving a loan from the Sacramento area Council of Governments, SACOG, to provide gap funding for the construction of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project.
I'll second that, I'd like to speak to that motion.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page or not, but that we will not, we will dedicate ourselves to not spending general fund money if, when that comes time to pay that loan back.
Agreed.
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 Okay.
Make a note of that.
Got it.
Still have to vote on the motion.
This is true.
Motion by Schaefer, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll take the third one. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt Incorporated for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project.
Motion by Schaefer.
Second.
Second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Somebody else can take this one.
Yeah, let's break it up a little bit, guys.
All right, I can, I can handle a few of these. Make a motion that we resolve to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Coastal Civil Engineering Service to provide construction management, inspection and materials testing services for the Arcade Cripple Creek, formerly known as Electric Greenway, Greenway Trail Project.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Also move a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Seven to the contract for professional services with GHD Incorporated for construction support for the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I move a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Sacramento Tree Foundation to provide professional services for tree planting except for cottonwoods, monitoring and outreach services.
Strong second.
Strong second, I knew I'd get you a second.
Oh my gosh. Motion by Miller, second by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item.
Next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Ashley, being your city manager, I just want to acknowledge and recognize the good work that was done by the city council tonight on this Arcade Cripple Creek project as well as by the community. A lot of great questions coming in from your council as well as community members that I do believe has made this to be a better project. And I also really want to acknowledge and appreciate the work of Leslie Blomquist and Casey Kemp Pennar for their efforts all along the way. This is, the project has been long in the making and I believe it's one that the community will enjoy for generations to come. So thank you. No further comments.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
We got anything? Man, okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Excellent. Nice job, Mayor.